Call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for May 24th, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chelka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received its proposal or is amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Public comments? Anybody in the public want to make any public comments? Come up and give your name and your address, sir.
My name is Mike Mush. I live at 303 First Street in Washburn. I'm new to this, so I'm not sure this is how you do all of this. I've got problems with some property around my house in Washburn. Last fall, Tom Little helped me try to get something done with the property that butts up against the back of my house. The guy was burning garbage rather than getting rid of it.
Right.
I never did hear whatever happened to that. Nothing's changed. It's not cleaned up. The garbage is all staying in the backyard. Not only that, but the house that is right across the street from me hasn't been mowed all year. Wasn't mowed last fall. There's junk cars in the driveway that have been sitting there for years that haven't moved. There's a dead deer carcass in a trailer that's out behind their house in the corner of their property. I guess the reason I'm here is who do I contact or how do I go about trying to get something done? I mean, I look out my front picture window and all I see is grass that's two feet tall and junk cars, garbage all around the house. So I just need to know the route.
This is Tom Little. If you call me after the meeting, I'll pull the files on that and we'll go through who I contacted for this year because I thought we had it taken care of. So give me a call after the meeting.
I'll do that.
Did you say your address or would you repeat it again for me?
It's 303 First Street in Washburn.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did Rory get ahold of you?
He got ahold of me last fall, or it was late summer or fall, and he was going to send somebody out to that property behind me and then get back to me. Then I never heard anything to know what.
He didn't get back with you in regards to the burning?
No. Because he was going to try to, something about his.
Yeah, he was going to look to see if there was an ordinance.
Yeah, something about, you know, a public safety or public something.
Right.
That I never did hear anything back.
All right. He's gone for the next couple of days. He's up in Rochester with his wife.
I'll contact Tom. It's all done.
All right. Thank you. Have a good day. Anyone else? Anyone else online? Hearing none. Moving on to claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures total $536,705.06 and $6 cents. The sheriff's department makes up $56,297. Health department, $16,081. Conservation, $17,168. Secondary roads, $349,523. Finally, the assessor at $29,387. Everything looked normal.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Our secondary roads crews are out placing Mile Rock in the north portion of the county this week. They will also begin mowing on our paved road system that will probably be either late Friday or starting after the Memorial Day holiday. And then lastly, our dust control vendors who are placing the chlorides and the primary chlorides this year, they will begin, they have started that, and I believe they're about halfway through the county, the various vendors. So can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads in house?
Good morning, board. Cherry Gammeyer from HR. I'm the HR specialist. I'm just taking this opportunity to remind all employees of the Blackhawk County of the ongoing open enrollment, which will end on Tuesday, May 31st. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Hearing none. Minutes approved for May 17th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Proposed motion carried. Hearing times are approximate 9:05. Proposed fiscal year budget amendment. Moving on to consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is other businesses. The motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for a safety coordinator full-time, new effective July 1st, 2022, is recommended by Rory Given, maintenance supervisor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Next, the motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for an assistant county attorney, full-time replacement with a start date no sooner than May 20th.
So moved.
Is recommended by Brian Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Next is a motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for an office specialist full-time replacement for immediate start date, as recommended by Brian Williams, county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions?
Who isn't Brian hiring?
He needs one more next week.
Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Next, the motion to approve the personal requisition submitted for an account specialist full-time replacement with a start date no sooner than June 6th, 2022, is recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy?
This is just a replacement for someone who our current account specialist is transferring to the treasurer's office.
Thank you, Kathy. Hearing no further questions. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Next is a motion to utilize staffing agency for temporary clerical worker not to exceed $8,000, is recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer. Is this the same person that you're looking for? Or not the same person, but the person to replace that person?
Yes, this will be posted later this week. We're hopeful the account specialist, if no internal bids on it, we have to advertise, look outside, then it could take several weeks to get someone here. So we are very short staffed due to this being construction season right now. So this would, a temporary person would greatly help us out in the next four to five weeks if we don't get any.
Is there any temporary workers out there for staffing?
I don't know. We've been working with HR to get you some costs and they'll help us if it comes to that.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, so moved. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trining. Moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Next, the resolution that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors approves allocating its total SLR FRF allocation as expected amount of $10,000 or $10 million as lost revenue to spend on government services.
I just have a question. We have expected amount in there. Isn't that pretty much us designating the $10 million?
Yeah. Yes. So when we first allocated or calculated the lost revenue portion of the ARPA funds, we calculated that at 4.3 million. That was in the year with, you know, lower property taxes and low state revenue grants. When we calculated that at 4.3 million, the ARPA guidance came out and said to increase that, we could just allocate a standard dollar amount at $10 million for lost revenue. That is something that would benefit Blackhawk County as that frees up quite a bit of dollars from that end. So I would recommend we do that.
Any other questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Again, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next, the resolution that the county auditor be directed to increase or decrease the appropriations to various operating budgets for fiscal year 22 for offices as submitted and as shown upon the records in the office of county finance director, with such changes being made in accordance with 331.434.6 to the code of Iowa.
I think we have to do the hearing before that.
Pardon me?
I think we have to do the hearing before the resolution.
Oh. Sorry about that.
It'll be short.
No problem. Al, would you be able to minimize that on the screen there? Thank you. All right. So very quickly, I'll go through the items on the final FY22 amendment. There aren't many, so please just stop me if you have any questions. All right. So these are the budget adjustments by departments. So we have, first we have the conservation trust. These are the donated dollars for specific projects for conservation. We're increasing the expenditures by $38,000. A lot of those are the Lucy's Memorial for trees and shrubs, Hartman's for kids' playscapes items and trail signs. We're also increasing revenues for donations in the amount of $15,000. This doesn't affect the general fund or any preserves or tax askings. Moving on, we have jail commissary fund 141. These dollars are received from the commissary items that are sold to the inmates. Therefore, they need to be used for the betterment of the inmates. We have a sewer line project and a purchase of a large full-body scanner. This is going to be used for moving inmates in and out of the jail just to make sure that there's nothing on their body. The expenses are increasing by $300,000 as well as revenues are increasing by $187,000. Our maintenance department, this is in the general fund. The expenses are increasing by $29,000. We had a few emergency repairs. Boiler inspection, that was, that was budgeted for in previous years, so that's going to be a carryover. And then they did have a minor salary adjustment in there as well. The sheriff's department, there was one deputy that was budgeted for in the general fund rather than the rural fund. So we are just, that is just a one-for-one change. We are lowering the budget amount for the general fund by $120,500 and we're increasing the budget for the rural fund by $120,500. So that is a wash on that. Moving on to secondary roads, we are increasing the expenditures by $1,005,000. That is to reimburse the farm-to-market fund as well as a final payment for the Cedar Wopsy Bridge. That was budgeted for in previous years as well. Again, that does not affect the general fund. These increases are due to benefit enrollment changes that happened mid-year. That was something that happened after we went through the budget process. HR, our human resources department, we have to increase by $24,600 or recorder's office by $24,600 and our treasurer's office by $24,600. That is the exact dollar amount of our family insurance premium. Other expenditure increases or adjustments, we have our medical examiner increase for $55,000. Those are for autopsies. Again, when we go through the budget process, that's really kind of a trend. We kind of guess. We never really know where that's going to end up at the end of the year. So that is something that we do need to adjust before the end of the fiscal year. Our elections increase for election supplies, excuse me, in the amount of $50,000. That was a line item that was presented to the board and approved on, but it was not changed into our system before the budget got submitted. So that doesn't need to just be changed just due to the election that we have this coming or in this fiscal year, excuse me.
Do you recall what those election supplies were?
They would just be your envelopes, your stamps, your postage. I mean, everything that they budget for for a normal election, that did not get switched from last fiscal year. Last fiscal year, we didn't have, we didn't have an election and therefore it did need to be increased for this fiscal year and that line item just wasn't changed in our system. And then finally, we are lowering general supervision expenses by $157,800 and this is to remain budget neutral. So everything that I've discussed is not changing our overall expenses. We are just kind of shifting dollars from one function to another. We are lowering arbitrage expense, postage, salaries and dollars for publishing. Finally, our debt service adjustment. When we budget for solid waste, when we did the bonding for them, we spoke to our independent auditors and we were indicated to not show revenue or expenses on our books. This is, this is more of their debt than ours, even though we are kind of really the signers on these bonds. When we went through the process, we cannot not show expenses when we pay these to UMB Bank. So we do need to increase our expenditures. Now, the problem is if we were to just increase expenditures and not show the revenue, then our budgeted dollars go off and our fund balances change. And so really, we do need to increase revenues by the same dollar amount, even though we will not count that as revenue. When we receive the $1.7 million, we're just going to reduce bonds receivable or notes receivable. So it is just an accounting adjustment, but from a budgeting side, we do need to offset those revenues and expenditures for the dollar amount for solid waste.
Similar to a pass through.
Exactly. Yep.
Thank you.
And finally, that is the public notice that was published on 5/12 of 2022. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, James.
Yes, sir.
This is 9/18. This is a hearing on proposed fiscal year 22 budget amendment. Motion received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. This is a resolution that the fiscal year budget be amended by changing previous revenues and expenditures on file with the county auditor.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the county auditor be directed to increase or decrease appropriations to the various operating budgets for fiscal year 22.
So moved.
Second. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is discussion, possible board action. Senate study bill 3157.
Thank you. Well, I put this on today for the resolution and hoping it could be unanimously approved because of all of the issues, I guess, with this particular bill. As all of us know, there's been a lot of discussion about I-Will this last legislative session. And for years, we've been all hoping that they would, the legislature would approve the three-eighths of one cent to fund it. However, as it's gone through several renditions throughout House bills and Senate bills and has now ended up as a Senate study bill 3157, it's like many bills, as you start to dissect them, there are a lot more issues to understand and work through. And so the urban county coalition's been very helpful in kind of dissecting this for us in our five county area. And we've had a lot of discussion on many issues, but particularly this one's come up throughout the session. And so we felt it was important that we went on record opposing the Senate study bill 3157. And I won't go into all of those reasons because I'm going to ask Grant if that's all right with everyone to read through the resolution. And that really lists everything individually, so we don't have to go through each one. But I think what was important or what seemed to be most important to all of us is that the I-Will, the Iowa Land and Legacy Trust Fund was voted on in 2010 by the voters. And they were given a framework on how the money would be allocated and implemented and voted on it, approved it, and expected the legislature to take action on it. So that's something that this would be changing with this Senate file or study bill 3157. Also, we know, especially in Blackhawk County, how it pertains to us, the local option sales tax is something we've taken advantage of since 1991. And I believe we said in 1991 to 2008, the voters voted on this in 1991 as well. And this is something that they designated that would be used for 100% property tax relief from 91 until 2008. Then in 2008, they voted to make it a 50% sales tax, I mean, 50% of the sales tax for property tax relief and 50% for roads and bridges use. So unfortunately, as much as we all support I-Will and want to see that move forward, the fact that they're wanting to take away the local option sales tax and also make changes to the I-Will Trust Fund made it very important to us to see that we need to, we'd like them to go back to the table, do some more homework on this. We're very interested in the three-eighths of one cent to be used for the reasons that were voted on by the people. But I think the people voting on it was a critical component of it. And we can talk to it from our standpoint, the countywide. I know Kathy and Mike, I'd asked them earlier to speak on it because it was something a couple of weeks ago, I think I've mentioned to you, that I'd just asked Mike about in his board. I was concerned or interested in how his board felt about it. And they discussed it and had some strong feelings about it as well. And Mike certainly can address that. But would the board, I guess whatever your preference would be, to read the resolution first and have others speak or hear the speakers first and then Grant read through it?
Either way.
Whatever.
Grant, we're going to be here for like 15 more minutes.
And I apologize for that. I said I did try to make it shorter, but I thought it was important to include all the points.
It hits the points well.
Okay, thank you. So how, anybody, should Grant read it first and then?
People in the morning will listen.
I hope so. We thought in designing it like this and having the points listed, that we could use it for other groups to understand kind of how much is involved in this and it isn't just, you know, supporting the I-Will program, but to see that, hey, let's work through some of these issues and make sure they're not taking away something from county government and the areas that we can address our taxes on.
They ain't going to try and bullet on this before the end of the.
Well, that's why we're taking the action now. I think, and Mike's board was good to mention this too. I said there wasn't a rush because we didn't think this was probably going to happen yet this session and to be prepared for the next one. But it was brought up at that time that we don't know what could be pulled out at the last minute. So let's take a stance on it now, whether it's this session or next. So appreciate you mentioning that. So Mike and Kathy, would you like us to read the resolution first and?
Sure.
Would that be, okay, if you wouldn't mind. Grant, thank you.
This is a resolution to oppose Senate study bill 3157. The Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors wholeheartedly supports the Iowa Water and Land Legacy, IWLL, Trust Fund since the constitutional amendment was presented and passed by the voters in 2010. Additionally, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors wholeheartedly supports the local option sales tax, LOST, which many jurisdictions across Iowa have also approved by referendum to fund local initiatives, including property tax relief, conservation spending and roads and bridges projects. Whereas this past legislative session, SSB 3157 was introduced. It proposes to convert the local option sales tax efforts into a statewide sales tax and impose the local option sales tax in every jurisdiction. That action would trigger the constitutional amendment and require an allocation of three-eighths of a cent to the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Trust Fund. Whereas the approach of SSB 3157 has two serious problems. It relies on the good faith of the General Assembly over the next few decades to keep its word on sending funds to local governments. It also has serious issues on fully funding the efforts the voters in Iowa supported with the IWLL constitutional amendment. Whereas voters across Iowa who have voted to utilize the local option sales tax have approved revenue purposes statements, RPS. Some RPS statements will expire or need reauthorization. SSB 3157 would void all the LOST and the new RPS statements that take effect after January 1st, 2023. It would require cities or counties to adopt new RPS statements or spend the revenue in accordance with the state formula. Whereas SSB 3157 also sunsets these provisions in 2035, after which no jurisdiction will have the authority to take an LOST proposal to a vote, essentially deleting local government's ability to have local option sales taxes. Whereas SSB 3157 creates a known revenue shortfall in the state pool. The General Assembly proposes a backfill to make sure that local jurisdictions do not experience a decrease in revenue. In a similar vein, we have heard the legislature, when it phased out the property tax backfill, pardon me, backfill beginning last year, say that no legislature can bind a future legislature to any course of action or commitments. Therefore, there is no guarantee that the legislature won't change allocations in the future to reallocate resources. Additionally, there is no mention about what happens if Iowa continues to grow and the legislature decides that because revenues in the statewide pool have grown, there is no need to backfill a shortfall. This means that instead of benefiting from efforts to grow their communities, cities and counties would once again be responsible to pay for a promise made by the legislature. As proposed, the majority of the monies appears to be allocated to non-point source water quality programs. It also proposes to eliminate appropriations to the REAP program, but does not say how much will be allocated by the new formula. Many of the originally envisioned programs, including those that were designed to provide funds to enhance outdoor recreation activities, do not appear to be funded at levels expected when the voters consider the original constitutional amendment. Whereas the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors is concerned about and adopt an IWLL at all costs attitude. The formula for distribution will not be easy to change once set, and we know that the legislature does not have the most impressive history of keeping its promises to backfill lost revenue to local governments. Therefore, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors would like to go on record as being opposed to Senate study bill 3157. The Board of Supervisors unanimously supports the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Trust Fund. However, SSB 3157 is currently written, would not only strip the county of control over local option sales tax revenues, but would effectively disregard the will of the voters.
Mike or Kathy, which one you want to go first? Got anything, point you want to bring up?
Good morning again. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I just want to echo what Linda said, that in 2008, the voters here in Blackhawk County voted to continue the local option sales tax. Prior points before that, it was 100% of that money going to tax relief for county residents. At that point, it got changed to 50% of those funds going to pay off general obligation bonds that were to be used for road and bridge replacements, reconstructions, improvements, that type of thing. In the last, since 2008, in the last 12 to 15 years, we have resurfaced over 85 miles in Blackhawk County, so that we now have one of the best county road systems in the state of Iowa due to this increase in funding that we are spending on the roads. That allowed us in 2000. That allowed us in two thousand and twelve to replace the Cedar River Bridges on Brandon Road, the main Cedar River Bridge, as well as the overflow bridge on Brandon Road. That cost was six point five million dollars. In that time, we've issued about forty-five million dollars' worth of bonds to repay, or general obligation bonds, to repay our road and bridge improvements here in this county. I'm concerned that if this Senate Study Bill passes, that we will, the voters who have voted to approve this, will lose that ability to use those funds as they have voted on, that we will not be able to use those to continue to improve the road and bridges in this county. We receive approximately one point three million dollars a year towards repaying general obligation bonds for road and bridge construction, so I would definitely like to see that continue. It has greatly helped improve the condition of the roads and bridges here in Blackhawk County. So, I urge you to, I agree with your comments about Senate Study Bill Thirty-One Fifty-Seven.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Mike?
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Mike Hendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. First of all, conservation wants everyone to know that obviously we support Iowa. County conservation across the state of Iowa has fought for Iowa since two thousand and ten to no avail, but I do think the battle will be won at some point. We also want everyone to understand that even with the formula, and the formula I'm talking about, the seven slices of pie that the governor proposed two years ago when she brought forward her Invest in Iowa program, which included Iowa. And county conservation stood very strongly in her favor for that. Even though that formula was not what was originally voted on in two thousand and ten by the voters, we, conservation supported that because it was estimated in two thousand and ten, had that gone through, and had we had that three eighths of a cent, a hundred and eighty million dollars would have been invested in conservation across the state of Iowa every single year. So, take that times now, twelve years, and conservation is the big loser here. And so, our purpose two years ago, and the reason we supported this formula and the way it was divided up, and one of my examples is classic trails. Trails were originally, they were supposed to get ten percent of the pie. Her program cut it to four. Yeah, we would like to see ten percent of the pie, but four's better than nothing. And when we're struggling with a tiny little million dollar a year in state rec trail funds for trail reconstruction and things like that, it just doesn't go very far. So, we'll take four percent. REAP was to be originally at thirteen percent, and you know, it's proposed at ten. But again, over the years, we've lost so much, we have to start that somewhere. So, I want you to understand that we still support that formula. But here's where county conservation, Blackhawk County Conservation drew the line. We cannot support anything. We cannot support Iowa in this bill because of the adverse effects that bill will have on the county as a whole. And therefore, as it was discussed in our meeting on May the eleventh, Blackhawk County Conservation Board did vote to oppose Senate Study Bill Thirty-One Fifty-Seven as it was written. So, anyway, we feel like that's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks very much.
With that being said, who wants to make the motion?
I will. I'll make that motion to adopt the resolution.
About a second.
Second.
Moving to second. This is a resolution, please answer your names called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felka.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted.
Thank you.
Next is discussion, possible board action on A R P Committee Recommendation for Consulting. James?
Excuse me. Yes, good morning. So, as promised, we got proposals from our two prospective consultants, and we as a committee for the A R P met, and we kind of went through these proposals in depth. And really looking at them, we did determine that we, as a committee, would like to recommend Baker Tilly for our consultant. Now, when we look at these, when we look at these proposals, they are vastly different as far as dollar amounts go. However, if you actually look at the hourly rate, the hourly rate is the exact same. So, we have, we have one advisor that feels that they can accomplish everything that we would like to do in a tenth of, in a tenth of the amount of hours. We, as a committee, don't feel like that is adequate. Now, looking at Baker Tilly for the much higher dollar amount, we don't necessarily feel as though it's going to reach that high of dollar amount either. So, we're kind of floating in the middle here, and we feel like Baker Tilly has a much more in-depth process. They have already submitted a, an application type of questionnaire that we can send out to the department heads. They feel, we feel as a, as a committee, that we're really in good hands with Baker Tilly, even with that higher dollar amount. We feel like if we did move on with Aylers, with the estimated dollar amount of ten thousand, we would be coming back to this board for an increase in that, in that contract. So, with that being said, I'll kind of open it up to the committee if anybody else has anything to say. I know, I know Chris is on there as well, so if he has any comments. But we really feel comfortable with Baker Tilly and moving forward with that. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions or any other comments from...
Who's on the committee again? You, Grant, Mike, Billy Joe, Chris?
And Jen Todd from the auditor's office.
I'll make a few comments. First of all, I echo everything James just said. Bottom line was with Aylers, we're not really clear, and even in conversations, we didn't get clear, clarity from them as to what their role is going to be. They don't have the experience right now doing the written justifications, for example, something where we're going to need some outside involvement on at least some of our projects. In addition to that, Baker Tilly's proposal is really a robust tool. It goes from application all the way to putting it on to what they call a burden of proof continuum to try to give us a picture of the likelihood that it's going to pass ARPA muster. And it also kicks out documentation that can be used for reporting and auditing purposes. In addition to that, just to kind of put it in perspective, and we know that we're talking a lot of money, no matter what we're looking at here, but when we're talking about trying to ensure that we don't have to pay anything back of twenty-four and a half million dollars, a cost of a hundred thousand dollars is less than a half of a percent of that total figure. There wasn't really any debate or waffling by any of the committee members despite going back and forth over these proposals. The, it was consensus.
I guess my question would be why you, why you only took the two then, when there's such a difference in jobs to be performed? Why we only looked at two? One at the extreme of ten thousand and one at the extreme of a hundred thousand dollars? Seems like there's a vast difference in there, an opportunity for looking at something else or another proposal, rather than just saying that the high one offers us what you need or what you think we need?
And that's a fair question. We relied heavily initially on our, on our independent auditors at C L A to advise us as to people that they were aware, specialized beyond their firm in this type of work. In addition to that, I know that in speaking with one of these two firms, he ironically, on his own, without knowing we were talking to the other one, mentioned that the other one was the only one he knew of that specialized in this. We discussed this very concerned, and the worry was that we would get a lot of proposals, and they would be from firms that don't specialize in this, that haven't made the time investment of their professionals to actually develop a specialty in this area. And so, the thought process was we might, we might get different proposals, they might be in between these two numbers, they could be on either side of either of these numbers. But the problem would be that we wouldn't have the assurance, and we wouldn't know whether we could get that assurance, that they were specialists in this field. It's, I know from work in the private practice, for example, sometimes what happens is you have an opportunity to do some kind of work for one client, who's a really good client, but you've got to learn how to do that work. And in the process, you often find it more difficult to learn to do that work in the same depth and to the same extent as someone who is, who has made it a point to say, look, we're going to develop a specialty in this, and we're now representing a number of clients in this specialty area. So, for that reason, the two proposals that we obtained were deemed sufficient. We obviously couldn't go with C L A.
I don't think, in any other of our departments, I don't think two proposals would have been deemed significant with that extreme difference in service dollars. I mean, if other, I'm thinking of like maintenance or any department that came to us and said we have two proposals, one's ten thousand and one's a hundred thousand dollars. I think that would be, that's to me sometimes the point of us doing R F Ps is because you see the variance in what the services are. And I know you're questioning, like you said, who is qualified to do that. ARP, I know, is new for everybody, including these folks too, as far as they may be very familiar with federal procurement. But I'm just thinking that, and that probably puts some leap years ahead of many, but I just thought to think that they're the only ones that are in this just seems a bit...
Well, and keep in mind that this has come about in about a week and a half's time. We can certainly go and prepare an R F P that's probably setting out the actual submission and evaluation of those proposals by, I would guess, about three weeks, just because of the nature of the process. And that's if we expedited it. So, that could obviously be done. Time considerations were also being factored here as well. What the law requires, of course, is that we get what we deem as a sufficient number of proposals. If the board doesn't believe this is sufficient, we can go back and send out to more places. But again, I stand on everything I said earlier with respect to why these two were deemed sufficient.
Because they were referred or recommended by C L A.
And they were recommended, or and they were regarded as the only two, at least in this area, relatively speaking, because one's out of the Kansas City area, one's out of the Twin Cities, who had this, this focus, this specialty.
No, it's...
Mike, are you saying time is a factor? I guess I don't understand what that means. Time is a factor.
Well, at least one of your colleagues has voiced concern to me, Tom, that we need to get moving on certain projects, and we don't think that the committee should be second guessing what a consultant would do. So, that was one of the reasons, time was a factor. The other reason is that we've had at least one department voice concerns about when our, when these things are going to be approved. Finally, the third aspect of that is that we have certain projects that have been expensed that need, that need to be kind of retroactively evaluated, as well as certain projects that were approved but have not yet been expensed. We regarded those as somewhat time sensitive.
But I guess I kind of look at it as a county supervisor in the county, is we want to make sure that we're getting the best advice and not be pressured by expediting any project. I mean, we do have until what, twenty-six, or twenty-four, twenty-six, whatever? And I'm not going to base any of my decisions on we have to do it right away, these projects. The board probably made a mistake in the beginning by even allowing any projects come in before we expedited what we're trying to do now.
And I think that's, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What actually are we looking for a company to do for the Board of Supervisors, the county? What actually would be their role?
I'll answer that for you, Tom. So, as a consultant, really what we're looking at doing is we're going to take the questionnaire or the application in this process from the department heads. We're going to review them and then submit them to the consultant. The consultant is going to really allow us and give us the assurance that these do qualify under the specific expenditure categories that we deemed, and make sure that they do pass, you know, A R P A muster, as Mike Trenton had said. So, and then furthermore, when we get to the reporting aspect, they're going to be taking a heavy hand to getting these, these reports uploaded to the Treasury. And then, once that is completed, then it's going to go back to the committee to make sure that we didn't miss anything, and then submit that to the Treasury as a committee. So, the consultant is really just there to help with compliance with both the reporting and the eligibility.
Well, let me ask you this, and I'm not saying there is, but is it possible that there's projects that are submitted to the committee that the board doesn't want anything to do with? And you go through this long process, this layered process of a committee, a consultant, consultant back to the committee, when maybe the proposal should be submitted to the board to see if they're even interested? Then, I would assume that would go through the process by going to the consultant if and when we hire one? It just seems like we got too many layers of bureaucracy there that doesn't make any sense. I mean, it almost seems like the board is stuck when it comes to us, even if the consultant says, yeah, this is, this'll pass muster. You kind of put the board on the spot because, you know, maybe originally we would have said, no, we don't want to deal with this. I don't think this is a good project, even though it meets qualifications. Just because it meets the guidelines of the ARPA money expenditures from the federal government doesn't necessarily mean it's a good project for Blackhawk County, or necessarily mean that the Board of Supervisors even want to do it.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right. I mean, we can adjust the process however we would like. If you would like to see the projects prior to it going to the consultant, that is completely fine as well. But really, the consultant is just there to deem eligibility, as well as help with the expenditure reports to the U.S. Treasury. So, if that is something that you want to see before it goes to the consultant, to then evaluate to see if it, if it does qualify for the expenditure category, that is something that we can absolutely encourage or change in that process. That does not, that doesn't affect really what the consultant would do.
So, does the consultant sign off on every project? That, so then, I guess, what's the role of the committee?
Well, I think the committee would just kind of be there to buffer between the consultants and the board. Again, if the department heads, if the part, if the department heads send it to the committee, and then, again, if we change this process and the committee sends it to the board for review, and then it gets, and then it gets back to them, we're really just kind of, like I said, that buffer, so it's not all the department heads sending items to the consultant or to the board, and then the board to the consultant. It just kind of creates that point of contact, I suppose, as well as help along the process and that kind of thing. So, that's, that's how I...
So, the committee won't be analyzing and, I guess, or reviewing and analyzing and designating, yes, it is ARPA qualified? That would be up to the consultant?
Well, the way that I'd actually view it is the consultant would, you know, let's, let's take the Baker Tilly example. Consultant places a proposed project on a burden of proof continuum. The committee's going to discuss and be prepared to inform the board what that means and what our impressions are about that. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't mean you couldn't take that, you couldn't take that placement and interpret it on your own.
No, wait, just a minute, Mike. You're saying the committee would give that information to the board?
That, and that was...
Before or after a consultant is involved?
Well, and it all depends on what the board prefers, to Tom's point. But to kind of give you an example, why would I, at least myself, I'm not speaking for the committee now, I'm just speaking for my own thought process here. I myself thought that we would send it through the consultant first, not to influence the board as to whether the board wanted to do the project or not, but to simply provide the most information possible as to whether the project would qualify. That's the committees, the purpose of the committee and the purpose of the... That's the committee's, the, the purpose of the committee and the purpose of the consultant. It's not to decide whether or not the project is good for Black Hawk County. It's to help determine whether the project qualifies, and then to do all of the follow-up work after that to make sure these files are complete and reporting is done as needed.
That's the job of the consultant, or that's the job of the committee?
That would be the job of the committee, but the consultant would assist in those processes.
So the consultant's involved in every step of the process on this?
I, I would envision it that way.
I don't know, some of that wasn't clear, I thought, in reading it, but obviously you've talked to them and do some of that, so...
And I do just want to say, as far as the expenditures, we can, we can send our expenditure reports to the consultant, and then the way that that gets uploaded to the Treasury is very different than how we, um, than how we track them internally. And so they're gonna be, uh, putting that into the, uh, into the format that the Treasury needs to have that uploaded, uh, to their portal. So, um, we would be gathering that information and then sending it to, uh, the consultant for them to, uh, update and, or update the format and then submit it to the portal.
So would, we'd be submitting our information, or they'd be submitting our information? The reporting side of it?
They would not be submitting it, no, but they would be uploading it and then sending it that, letting the committee know that that has been done, and then once we, we would then log in, review it, analyze it, then sign off on it. And that was, that was also, um, my recommendation from Miranda at CLA.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to have some discussion with Miranda and others, I guess, about these proposals a little bit more information than what the proposals provided, because they are so different.
Revere my memory, when's this, 2024, right?
Uh, December thirty-first, 2024. Everything needs to be obligated, which means there's, needs to be a contract in place or invoices on their way, uh, and then we have, uh, 2026 to actually expense these dollars.
Have you, has anybody checked into other communities? Particularly, I guess, I look at Iowa, I'm thinking of the other counties that are utilizing this or what others are doing, because, I mean, obviously, we have a larger grant than some, so there would be just a smaller number of, of counties with that size, but what are other counties doing?
So, the vast majority of the counties in Iowa have received less than ten million dollars, and so...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, but the ones I'm talking to are the urban ones, yeah.
Yep, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, um, Bettendorf, or, excuse, well, Bet-, city of Bettendorf, uh, is using Baker-Tilly. Um, there are a few other counties that, uh, require a consultant, and I can't think of, can't think of the ones that they were in right now.
I was gonna say, I, I recall.
Oh, they listed all of their, yeah, their reference, yeah. No, I just meant us checking out what counties are doing here, I guess.
And, and certainly we could, we could contact them. I know I've heard through, uh, people have been on, uh, various messaging services have, have learned that, I believe I heard Lynn County, for example, hired a, or they contracted with a consultant. I think at least one, uh, larger county hired someone. Uh, but we could look into that more deeply, uh, and get back to you on that with specifics. Um, it, it, it has always been, again, I'm speaking for myself personally now, my personal opinion that we should not hire an employee per se, as I know at least one or two counties in Iowa have done, but rather to contract with a, a firm that specializes.
Sure, well, and I can check too. I just wondered if anybody checked on what the others, other counties are doing or how they're working through it, or what the cost is for the firms they're working with?
And, and I was relying on what I, what I heard through these, uh, I didn't myself, wasn't on myself on the message boards, but I have, uh, I know at least one committee member, I think two committee members are, and, and I didn't have any reason not to consider that information reliable. It definitely factored in.
I'm not saying it's reali- not reliable, Mike.
I actually prepared a question to send out to a message board of county auditors, and, um, I neglected to post it before I went out of town last week, but I will get that up shortly.
Oh, that'd be great, too, thank you. Well, I guess it's just trying to understand the role of the committee versus the consultant and what that role is and what we expect of them, or what our relationship is from board working with them, or if there is none, if it's just working with the committee and some of that. So like I said, it was a, quite a difference in proposals, too.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I guess I'm just a little confused. I've heard that the committee's gonna get it, it goes to the consultant, the consultant's gonna give it back to the committee, the committee is gonna forward it to the board. I, I don't know, it's kind of confusing. You know, in the end, regardless if you have a consultant or you don't, or you have a committee, uh, if something slips through the cracks and fingers are pointed, "Well, we did our job," or did, it's gonna fall on, uh, the shoulders of five people, and that's five people that are sitting up there, the Board of Supervisors. So ultimately, the board needs to take charge of this whole thing and take responsi- and tell the consultant, tell this committee, tell our employees, "This is the way we're gonna do it," and then move on, because in the end, we are the ones that are gonna be responsible. No committee, no consultant, the Board of Supervisors.
And I don't think anybody's disputing that fact, uh, Mr. Little. The, the idea here was to give the board the best possible information and evaluation, whether it's before or after, the board makes a preliminary determination as to desirability of a project for the county. And then, in addition, uh, at least one board member came to me and, and voiced, uh, the concern that, uh, that board member wanted to hear from a, from a professional auditor more than from a committee. And sa- and at the same time, you know, the county's independent auditor recommended a committee, so we're trying to implement the recommendations that we've had to give us the best possible scenario where we don't have, uh, an eligibility concern with how we use these funds.
Yeah, I agree, Mike, and I appreciate what you said, but I also make the comment, one board member doesn't direct his board of supervisors, five do.
I'm aware of that, uh, but I, I take all, all, all board members' comments to heart.
Now, would you explain that comment again, though, about the audit, the difference in the, listen, to the auditor versus the committee?
Um, bottom line is, the committee's going to take, if, assuming the board still wants the committee to play a role here, the committee's going to take all of the information, including from the department, and what the auditor kicks back out and bring that to the, or, what the consultant kicks back out and bring that to the board.
No, the comment that you said, "We'd prefer to hear from an auditor than, than the consultant,"
Well, I had a, a board member...
And I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, just meaning, yeah, what, what is meant by that?
Well, my understanding was, that board member wanted to hear from an outside auditor who specializes in ARPA qualification.
Oh, all right, adding in...
So whether that was through the committee or directly from, from the outside person, I don't know, but I, but I think it was pretty obvious in that conversation that that individual wanted to, wanted to hear from somebody who specialized, one way or the other.
And is it not true that any projects over a million dollars, that is needed? That is a piece that's needed to this?
Correct.
Over a million dollars, but not necessarily for some of the things that we have. We've gone through those lists, and I may have been one of the individuals you're speaking to as far as not wasting a lot of time, and Tom, if that's, um, clears that up somewhat. It's because we're a year and a half into this process. We have approved some projects already, and some are in kind of a timeline with engineering costs and different things that we've seen, and it was just not to stop and wait until we had another step in this. That, that was my concern, and so it was just like, there are things that we could be doing, and some of those projects were very simplified, I think. You know, we did some things that could, um, uh, washers and dryers and different things that we did for the jail and some things like that. Those, to me, weren't consuming, they're something the department head could be working out that worksheet or whatever it is, and be having some of those things done while we're waiting for other decisions, I guess. So that was my concern, that we don't just sit back and wait and say, "Well, when we do this and this, then we'll start working on it." That was all, not to say, "Let's get moving on a fast track."
Um, and that, that was how I understood it as well. I, I don't think anybody was suggesting we're hasty or that we're, we're in some kind of race to get this done. I, um, my point in, uh, in revealing that earlier was simply that, um, we, we did receive, uh, some concern, uh, as to the timing and as to keeping things moving.
Yeah, well, and I appreciate that you have continued to meet and work on things, and this proposal as well, as, as trying to get information out to some of the department heads too, so... But, um, yeah, still very interested in what other counties are doing or what others, communities, because I think we have a really good committee. I mean, I thought that gave us a real comfort level of the individuals you had and the different positions and people's different perspectives. So I thought that was a, a great step, but not, not saying that another isn't needed, but two very different proposals is all I'm thinking. And I, if you weren't happy with one, I don't know why we wouldn't have tried to reach out to another instead of just going for the Baker-Tilly. And I, and I don't mean to put you on the spot for it, I just meant that was something I, I would've thought.
And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ever say I was unhappy, and I, I'll speak for myself, again, not necessarily the committee, but I don't think anybody on the committee would say they were unhappy, uh, with anything, but definitely happier with one proposal. Uh, was impressed by the, by the tool that Baker-Tilly had.
Sure, and maybe that's something the board should look at or consider, or whatever, too, some of their...
Mr. Tralca, um, the duration of this contract is until December of 2024?
No, I, so when, when Baker-Tilly, uh, would sign on, they would actually sign on through 2027, which would allow us to submit the final, uh, expenditure report, if we had one, through 2026.
Gotcha, and the reason I mention the committee members is, is I feel the committee has a tremendous amount of credibility. It's a good committee. I think one way to solve the problem or concerns with projects getting submitted to the committee is that when projects are submitted, the board be included in it. If any board member has an issue with any particular project, just bring it, put it on the agenda of the board. Secondly, I know the requirements are pretty significant in reporting projects of more than a million dollars.
Yeah.
Complicated, complex, complicated. Uh, I feel that the one-hundred-thousand-dollar proposal, uh, is more realistic in regard to the needs we expect of this consultant, uh, versus the other company. Also, I feel this is gonna take a lot of the responsibility and, and workload. I know this, this whole ARP project, the projects that are coming in, our staff has been put under a tremendous amount of pressure, and it's created quite a workload for them, uh, because, uh, this is a new ballgame with what governments are to do with these funding and the requirements we have to meet. And we're being educated continually on the requirements. That's why we're gonna look back at some past projects and vet them and make sure we're doing the right things with the funding that's provided. Uh, so this, in my opinion, is gonna be a relief for some of our staff and ease their burden, because when we're under pressure and we're trying to do things quickly, that's when we make mistakes. Uh, so I support Baker-Tilly, I'm ready to move today, uh, and that's where I stand.
Anything else?
I'll just speak, uh, briefly to the, to the two proposals. Um, that we definitely just, um, had so much more of a sense of what Baker-Tilly was going to be providing, and then if we thought that this was only forty hours of work that this was gonna take from here until 2027, um, then, then staff would be able to handle that, but we don't think that that's the case. And so we just didn't see the other as, as all that realistic of a, of a, of a proposal. And so we're just, um, impressed that, that what Baker-Tilly offered would be a good insurance plan, um, essentially for the county, uh, as we, you know, spend this money.
When just being on the committee, they're spending time out of, out of their workday to be on this committee too, so you gotta take that into consideration. And I agree with what Mr. Tralca said about, uh, the consultants. The consultant, there is no way forty hours is gonna cover what needs to be covered. I mean, you could probably give this to a kindergartner and he could figure that out, that there's got a lot more work than forty hours in what we want to do. And we're spinning our wheels, week after week after week after week, and we've got projects that are, that we've looked at. I think, I thought they were approved, but we're still talking about them. And washers and dryers, they're on my back burner. I want stuff done that gets things, that, that we can make the dominoes start to fall. We're sitting here spinning wheels, laughing. It's not a laughing matter, this is money that's, you know, that we got for a reason to do things, to make this a better building, buildings, and we're sitting here spinning our wheels.
It was to make it, yeah, investment in our county, you're right, that's what it is. But I thought some of the things on the list are as small as washers and dryers, and so those things need to be addressed as well.
Yep, in about 2024, after we get through with all, all the moves and stuff. I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, that was your motion?
You can do a lot.
Why you get that by?
You can't do that.
I have a motion on the floor, do, what was it again, Sam?
Uh, accept the proposal from Baker-Tilly, under the terms outlined in the contract proposal.
Do I have a second?
I say, I'm supportive of this, and I want to go with Baker-Tilly, but I just want to give, um, board members courtesy if they need a week to review this. I want to respect that.
Has the, has the board seen the contract?
No, no, just the proposals.
Should we see a contract if we're actually voting, or aren't we voting on a contract today?
Proposal.
I'll change my word into proposal.
That's kind of accepting the contract, isn't it?
Was that a second from you, Chris?
The contract would be on the table.
I'm just, I just like to hear, do, do other board members wish to have one more week to review this before we take a vote today? I just want to, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive and I want to move forward, but I want to just give, um, all due respect to the others.
I, I appreciate that, Chris. Uh, I think a lot of information came out today, some new information to the board, and I think we do need more time than to, um, I know Craig mentioned he wants to move, we're spinning our wheels, but, uh, we can go ahead and start approving things, and then five years from now, start taking it out and budgeting for it to pay it back if we don't do it right, so now's the time to get it right, and don't worry about how fast we do it.
I'm not worried about fast, I'm worried about getting the job done.
'Cause there ain't nothing free.
And Chris, too, I'll speak to that. I, I appreciate the fact that you're, um, respective, I guess, of us wanting a little more time, and obviously, this would be great if we made the decision to be unanimous. I know it can't always be done that way, so then it becomes just the consensus, but my vote today would be no if we vote today on it, so...
So put it on the back burner until next week.
Yeah, one more week.
Any information or from the board or reports? I'd just like to report that Memorial Day Parade is Monday at ten AM downtown Waterloo, and then they'll have an eleven o'clock service at Memorial Hall. It's usually about a hundred people, and there's another thing Black Hawk County ought to hang their heads in shame over. I just read an article, or seen a picture last night, and it was of the cemetery in the Arlington National Cemetery, and go, the, that picture says it all. It says that these guys died so we could be doing what we're doing today. And we need to remember that, we're all, there's forty, forty-eight names across the, over in, uh, Memorial Hall, across the street, that, uh, Vietnam veterans that did get to come home or get to live a full life, and there, there's veterans dying every day that haven't got to do respect that they deserve. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Well, we, we have some vacancies on boards.
P and Z?
Yes.
Yes. Anybody want to interview them?
Just like jobs out in the public, nobody's applying for them.
Well, we do have some applicants, qualified ones.
We do.
So...
Didn't know we had any.
Yep.
That should be shared with the whole board too, when they come in.
Well, it came in, uh, an email, um, with the application submittals, and I was impressed with the qualifications of the individuals that applied, so...
And we've got the P and Z one that needs to be done.
Yes.
That, just one individual, but we need to interview that person too. So were you going to set that up, Craig, or?
What, what boards it for?
P and Z.
P and Z. Well, we talked about it last week, but...
I'll be involved.
All right.
You and me.
Yep.
Thank you.
Entertainment motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
I want to say, right?
Right.
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't look.